There we go.
Hello.
Hi, Councilor Brown, you there?
Yep, I'm here.
Good. We're going to get...
Thank you.
Turn to pray, and I'm just kidding.
We're going to get things started, okay? Thanks. Hope you feel better.
Our Father in Heaven, as we gather this evening in this council meeting, we are grateful for the opportunity that we have to serve. We pray that we will have Thy Spirit to guide and direct us, bless us to be able to understand those things that are presented to us, and help us to make those decisions that will be best for our town. In this we ask, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Well, welcome. This is the 11th day of February, and we are going to start our regular council town meeting. And we are really pleased to have the media there. Thank you, Corey. You're always there for us. It's good. And we want to thank all those who are in the gallery. Dr. Lowe, Dr. Lowe, and Skylar, and James, and Dr. Strang and his dear wife. So, thank you so much for being all there for us today. So, we're going to call the meeting to order, and you all have a packet on the front of you. There is under question, maybe an extra debrief that will come, or questions that might come regarding the open house. And Councilor Brown has asked it to be brought up. Am I correct?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you. All right, we have a delegation regarding the spray park, and Rotarians are going to do that for us. Who is the spokesperson?
Mary, did you adopt the agenda?
Uh, yeah, I was going to adopt it.
Make the motion to adopt the agenda.
All in favor? Thank you. Yeah, I was going to look quick here. So, Justin and Skylar and James? Oh, well, that's okay, you know? We'll be happy. You're going to discuss the spray park. I know that you have an application for funding that needs to be honored at this point, and so we are on the 11th house, and we need to find some solutions.
So, just kind of last time we came, we had decided on the location for it, but we had told you that we were still eighty to ninety thousand dollars short of that fundraising. We've been working very hard with many others, and we're now ten thousand dollars short. So, we've, in the three or four months since we met with you, we've come up with eighty thousand dollars. So, the point of tonight is we kind of wanted to review the budget and where we're at, because there's other things that have come up as far as, you know, there's big questions to answer, and we've been communicating with Jeff and Randy and some others, basically about the infrastructure that needs to happen in order to install it as well. I don't know, Jeff, did you have a place you wanted us to start? Okay. Okay. You have a spreadsheet there, and that's a full spreadsheet of expenses, and donations, and a net shortfall. Now, on this sheet, it says we have a net shortfall of forty-five thousand, six hundred and one dollars. Now, our purpose tonight is to show you that we're actually really, really close, and that number is a lot smaller with some assistance. And we're going to ask council for a few things, and we'll show you why. There are some expenses, like, for example, on the second one, relocation of power poles and building reconnects on the second line there. You see there's some material cost.
Is cash cost?
And that's an estimate. But then there's also town labor and machine time. So, those are things that we didn't account for in the original budget. So, as a club, we were going to ask councils, we wanted to ask if council would be willing to provide that town labor and machine time to help fund that project. It's not the cash cost, but it is on the books with town employees working in machine labor. We have similar thing in a couple of areas.
The sod, for example?
Like, the relocation of the irrigation lines. And if you go down further on, like, the sod replacement, there's some cash cost, but we're doing that, though.
What's that?
We're doing that portion. We basically went through and got people who could donate things. So, removal of the trees, we've got someone to do that, so it's not on town dollar. Removal of the building, we've got people to do both that and the cement pad, so it's not on town dollar. Rewelding the fence together, if we have to take apart part of the fence to get big equipment in there, we've got someone, Lane Jakes, who would volunteer to do that.
And to put it back up.
And to put it back up. So, we basically went through and got as much of the labor that we could get donated and volunteered as possible. And basically, the town labor and machine time that we're looking at is approximately...
Just nine thousand.
Yeah, seven to nine thousand, somewhere in there. And then, so that's how much town labor and machine time we're looking for. And if you account for that, then there's one more big thing that we need to talk about, and that's water supply and sanitary sewer supply. So, in order to run the spray park, it needs a three-quarter inch water pipe to the spray park. That is what currently exists down there right now. Randy tells us that it's on a pressure system, so they actually have to put pressure to even...
Flush the toilets.
Flush the toilets, run the sinks and everything. There's not a huge water requirement for this, because once the tank is full, you're just replacing what's lost to evaporation, which BDI tells us is probably around one gallon per minute, potentially a bit more if it's really windy or hot. So, the big question was, could we do the spray park with the existing water park and, or water pipe and infrastructure that's there? Or do we need increased infrastructure? And we're told that the line that's there right now is old. We don't know how long it'll last. We don't know if the increase, we don't know for sure if there's enough pressure there, but if there is, what effect it will have on the existing pipe? And so, there's just unanswered questions there.
And you cannot test until the water is ready to flow through, right?
Right.
Unless you wanted to do just that one line and test it, and then re-blow it out. So, not everything, it's just one line that goes down there from the street.
Okay.
So, the idea that we've been talking about is, I know there's some appetite for getting a bigger line in there anyways to better service the bathrooms, to provide for possible future projects, and to serve the spray park. So, that, right there, is twenty-four thousand dollars to run a whole new four-inch line out there with bigger capacity for everything, with the increased sanitary sewer supply. That's something that we didn't budget for in the original budget. We assumed with a three-quarter inch line that we could do that. So, that's a big question right now, I guess, with council is.
And probably, if we do need it, like, that's the first question, do we need it? And if we do need it, is that something that you want to tack on to the whole project to us as a budget item? Because it's a big number.
Okay, so, that goes along with the idea, if what you're saying is what I heard, are you willing to partner with the town for a portion of that line if we were to go to the bigger line?
I think it's reasonable, but the first question is, is it big enough as it is right now? Because BDI is telling us yes, but we don't know until it's actual measured. And when we're talking about, like, if it's a business or a personal person that says, okay, here's a twenty-four thousand dollar bill, you'd want to make sure before you actually need it, right? And that's all we're saying when it comes to that.
And we cannot really tell until it's tested?
Yeah.
So, that maybe, Jeff, those are questioned for administration more than for us. We really not in the business of water here.
Yeah, we can discuss that later.
No, thank you.
I have a comment, though, maybe it's, you know, the amount that they've raised is over four hundred thousand dollars. When you consider as a Rotary Club, we're not a massive fundraising team. We basically have four old men, four medium-aged men and two ladies, and that's it. And they really have rung every, they've talked to everybody that they think could donate, got every possible grant. And if you throw in another twenty-five thousand dollars, our total budget that we raise in a year is under twenty thousand. So, I mean, that may not seem like a lot, but to the Rotary Club, the way we are functioning now is a lot of money.
We've asked a lot of people for a lot of money, and they've actually given it.
But I really want to congratulate you on the ideas that you have for that spray park, et cetera. It's always a wonderful thing to see an association like the Lions of the Rotary come back and really raise that much money. It's phenomenal what you do and what you have done for the town from time past. But as everything goes, we're always stuck with budget restraints and limits, and you know what it is, right? And the upkeep, so, I mean, we don't need to explain that to you. It's because the budget is passed right now, so now we need to figure out what is reasonable, what can we do, and how can we make that happen in a sense that you have an application that needs to be honored.
And I will say, too, that judging from the size of the club and everything, we won't be adding any more major infrastructure to the town for some time, many years, I would presume.
Well, you need a rest. We all need a rest.
We're about shot, yeah.
There's some questions.
Councilor Sel.
I appreciate that you feel worn out with respect to these projects. Mike, I'm curious, though, would Rotary Club entertain partnership with the Lions Club to replace the pavilion?
Absolutely.
That has already been mentioned within our meetings already.
Lions, I mean, has to take that and discuss with their club, and we have to discuss with our club. But we have, like, it wouldn't happen this spring with this, but like, in the next year or two, we have access to some other grants and things that we could reasonably put in with our club with a grant, you know, ten thousand dollars towards it. And if we partnered with them, and they put in half, and we put in half, then you almost fund one of those structures that we're talking about.
So, you know what we're talking about?
Yeah, like, the ones that are down and by some of the state centers and all that kind of stuff.
We have a pretty secure grant that we can get each year, and that would fund it.
Awesome.
Councilor Ben-Gree.
I got five hundred questions, but I can only, I think we're going to discuss this later on.
Yeah, that's a full agenda.
My question to you right now is, we can build anything that we want. There is no problem. It's the aftermath that happens. Now, when it turns over to the town, the town has to look at the operation and the maintenance and so forth. Is there any kind of business plan that you're going to charge for entrance into this, into this park?
So, that's been the whole premise of, like, Rotary and the CFIP grant. Is there things that are accessible to the whole public and free to use? That's been the whole plan going forward.
And that was our indication from the get-go, that here's some budget ideas of what it's going to be approval that way. The biggest thing is coming up with the money to make the project happen. But I think, for the most part, that was discussed and understood.
Just help me ask you the following. I know this is a location right now. Is that set in stone at this point?
You know, I guess that's a decision that's up for council. We discussed a few locations, you know, several months ago when we were here. Probably the only other major viable option is right beside the swimming pool. But then there's a question of, is it actually going to save money or cost more money? There may be more landscaping involved there, putting up fences. From an operational point of view, it would probably be more convenient, because it's right there. You'd still have to build a pump house and other things, so just, we have no clue about the total dollars of a project, like, we'd have to, because right now, we've, since we got the location, everything, we've got everything funded for where we're at down there and what we need, but we haven't done a similar pricing for everything there that we'd need.
But the town did do, the town's kind of spearheading the location a little bit more, because they have a lot of the infrastructure and they know. And they did have some quotes on, okay, we have to put lines in, this and that. And that's kind of where we've left it, a little bit more up to the town. We got the project, you tell us the location.
Okay. Councilor Brown, is there any question you'd like to ask?
No, I think, I think honestly, my biggest question is just a matter, I think it's a Jeff question, and that is, do we need a bigger line? Do we need this extra, you know, twenty-four to thirty thousand dollars? Is that a need, or are we fine with what it's at? Because we need to make sure that we're going, they're going to all this work and expenses. Doing this right now, we want to make sure we're good for twenty years. We're not having to dig this up in five years.
Yeah, I hear you. Yeah, thank you.
Just to stir the pot up a bit, and we probably won't change the overall discussion, has mentioned to me that by someone, there's a concern that it's going to take away from the maybe already underutilized pool, because it's free and the pool's not. So, if you've got forty kids or fifty kids that might be in the pool, that might, will probably be in the spray park. Just a concern, nothing we can do about it. It's something to think about.
Maybe there is something that could be done.
Don't the majority of towns our size in Alberta have a spray park and a swimming pool?
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
I would just say, if you know our pool fees, little kids are free, right? Up to a certain age. And the majority of the little kids that are using spray parks, they're usually free. So, we're not making money at the Cartston Pool on those little kids. It's the older kids that we're making money on. That's the majority of where our money comes from. It's from the programming. It's not really from, it's not really from the little kids in the bucket entry part of the pool. Like, you're making money off of our classes and all of those things. I really, I really don't think that it's going to interrupt that at all.
Thanks, Counselor.
I was just gonna, in summary, I wanted to show you, the net fall right there is forty-five thousand, and that includes close to thirty thousand of the infrastructure for the water, and then nine thousand of the machine time and labor. So, that gets us to thirty-nine thousand. You see that we're, if those things are there, we're pretty much done with this massive project. We're going to get the last six or seven thousand dollars.
The only thing you don't have inside there, which is normally there for large projects, is contingency for something going wrong, right?
Right.
That's not built in.
Probably the biggest thing, or big number, is the spray park itself, right? And that, that's a negotiated price, but I guess maybe that's where it comes in, they can change that. Jeff's kind of talked about that before, I think, right? Well, when you have a project and you got, here's your budget, they're approved, can they come back and say, okay, we're going to add another fifty thousand dollars?
From the tender, they can.
Go ahead.
So, it'd have to be through a change order. If we, if a contractor runs into something that they would suggest is unforeseen, they can certainly ask, right? It's not to say it would be granted, but if it's something unforeseen, then they can't proceed without mitigating it. I don't know what that would be on this project, I'm not sure, but there is change orders within contracts. Whether they're approved or not is another monster based on the criteria, why they asked for in the first place. This is the same company that built the playground.
And they build other parks in town, too. They just did the one down by our house. We have a good working relationship with BDI Play Designs.
But that's, that's good news. Councilor Ben-Gree, Councilor Sel.
Rotarians, I have to consider what Counselor Court said about the roller park right beside the pool. If you look at it, the infrastructure is there for the water circulation, the drainage.
And location-wise.
Yeah, location-wise, it's right there. We talk about dressing rooms. You can use pool dressing rooms. Fencing, you can extend the fence right off of the fencing there for security purposes. You got more eyes and things looking at those little kids. And a matter of using it free of charge, that's a simple process, I think. You know, where you could use some kind of a, and it's mentioned from another source, an armband, you know, a wristband, that they're using the spray park and not the swimming pool. So, if they have that wristband on, don't go in the swimming pool. There's a lot of pluses to that location of the, of the park itself.
We will discuss all that. We will discuss all that.
I didn't make that suggestion. I actually think really one is a better place, because it's by the playground, but that's...
But we will discuss all that afterwards. So, essentially, we need two more questions. Counselor Sel, Counselor Drew.
I don't know if it's a question. I think it's more of a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
We're a little far down the road to be changing locations, are we not, gentlemen? They're all nodding, so I think they all agree that...
That's where we're, just like, we keep asking the question.
Well, we are pretty far down the road. We'd have to really go back to the drawing board and get, again, a detailed budget of how to do all that and compare that location to the other location. So, yeah.
Then you might be another fifty thousand short.
Yeah, we don't need that. Counselor Drew, go ahead.
A question about the BDI Company. You said that you've been involved with other projects that they've built in town. Have they ever been over budget?
Our spray park was under budget.
The playground.
Our playground was under budget. So, on their portion was correct and everything. We saved on a few other things, and so it worked out well.
And so, the other projects they've had, so have they done any spray parks?
Oh, yeah. The one in Fort McLeod. So, they have a playground and a spray park beside each other in Fort McLeod. They did the new one in Waterton right now, the one that was just put up there. So...
They have some experience.
Yeah, they know their stuff. So, I guess what we're asking is, if you'd be willing to donate the machine time and the labor for the nine thousand and a decision on the whole water supply infrastructure. And again, if those things are in place, we're ready to, we're ready to cut down a couple of trees and get this building gone and remove the cement. We're ready to go.
You know, I admire your passion, because that passion is there to help the town and to beautify the town. So, thank you for that passion. Keep it up.
I think despite all your reservations, three years down the road, you'll say, hey, this was a good thing, despite everything. I think for reclamation of the Lions Park, it will add to the playground. It'll be a better place for your town and children.
And then if you throw up a nice structure like we're talking about in partnership with the Lions Club, then you just have a great, a great facility all around.
Family gathering. Jeff, you wanted to say something?
One thing I keep forgetting to ask you guys, is what's the appetite to scale this to give us some safety in the budget? We've never talked, this is a huge spray park. It's bigger than any other town would have. No other town our size would have a spray park this size, which has a ton of concerns. What's the discussion, or thoughts on scaling it?
You can scale anything, right?
You can scale anything.
A change order?
Change order, down.
But it's certainly bigger than Fort McLeod's, and it's bigger than Glenwood's. But, I mean, all along, we've, we've, it's basically in a three-tier thing. So, you've got a section with, like, splash things that don't have tons of stuff coming down for, like, the toddlers who don't like stuff all over their head. And you've got a bigger kids' section and immediate, it's kind of, that's what we've kind of planned for all along. We feel like we're almost there with the budget, but, I mean, there's these big items, obviously.
You'd save a little bit perhaps on what the capital project, but I think your maintenance would be very similar, wouldn't it be? I mean, everything else is...
Can I ask you something? It's designed for what age group altogether? You say the toddlers, the middle age, and then a little bit older kids?
Zero to a hundred.
So, are you looking at the whole gamut inside there? Because that's what the effect on the pool might then be if it's not restricted to any age. Skylar.
This might be going a little bit far, but thinking about business in Cartston, we had an A and W, then all of a sudden, we had another restaurant, right? And we're thinking, what's going on? Now, I'm not a hundred percent saying that's perfect, but when you bring more things in to do, it brings more people into town as well. So, it's hard to get an exact number, but to have more facilities in town brings more people to your town, and then they're going to use them. Now, are we at our capacity of who's going to be coming? It's hard to say, but I'd just like to kind of point that out as well, right?
Yeah, we'll never know until we try it, right? It's always the same truth.
I also want to point out that I have not encountered one person in the public who said, I don't want a spray park. People are really excited about this.
If you have children, grandchildren, and whatever, sure, absolutely.
If you saw our list of how much money people have given us by the fives and tens and even a twenty thousand, like, people are excited for this and they want this.
I really appreciate all your work. Trust me, we do. But we are always protective of the taxpayers' purse. Because when you give, it's not difficult for the town to give. But giving means the money comes from somewhere, right? So, eventually, it's from the taxpayer.
I just had one other question. Is there any infrastructure budget for the year that could cover that thirty thousand dollars? That doesn't come out of, like, Parks and Rec or something? Is there any infrastructure budget that you have that could encapsulate and absorb that? I don't know the answer to that, but that's just a question.
We have what you call council reserves.
Okay.
Probably the biggest thing, like, we're at this point now, right? And so, we just, and it's always been kind of the question as we've been going along, there's all these questions, but they're probably earlier questions. It's more now of what's the final decision, and then we have to adjust to whatever you guys decide.
You gave us good information, and I think at this point, what we need to do is have a fair discussion among ourselves and see the project through. So, we need to still kind of figure out how to do it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
So, that's what we would do. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Are they going to speak to the waiver for the golf course?
Okay, so, there is, there is another item we have here a little bit later on, but since you're here, maybe you want to talk about it. It's under six C in your packet. So, it's, I understand that you have figured out a little way to raise a little bit of money in a different way. So, go ahead.
Well, it's honestly, it's just putting money from here, putting it to theirs, is all it is. We've heard and we've seen that the town will give away one free golf tournament, like, green fees for a golf tournament for a fundraiser. And so, we're just thinking, well, if it's available, we wouldn't mind trying for it, because the funds are going to be used for a good thing anyways in our community. And we...
How much did we pay last year?
How much did we pay?
Forty-eight hundred.
Forty-eight hundred.
Forty-eight hundred bucks. But if it's free, you know, we're probably going to have, like, two hundred people come next time, right?
So, anyways, all those are discussion, because as I say, all those are recreation facilities, and we need to discuss all that.
And we enjoy the golf tournament. It's a great thing to get people from out of town, so we thought we'd ask for it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, we'll discuss all that afterward. You're free to stay, or you can have Jeff contact you afterwards. It's your desire.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, do you have it on the agenda? Okay, Dr. Strang, here is a little bit of a question for you. I know you were interested in asking something, but I don't see you on the agenda, so what's up?
He's just here.
He's just here.
Yes, Paul, I left here yesterday. Hey, yes, I am going to come and I would like to reserve that request to be allowed to speak.
You know, it's quite, it's quite good at the debriefing me. And I was there yesterday and it said that you knew that we needed to be on the agenda. So is that critical for you to be on the agenda today? That's my question, because we already approved the agenda.
On this discussion that's just taken place, there's one assumption there that's somewhat distressing, that camp kitchen pavilion replacement next year with the Lions Club, question mark.
Okay, all right.
Definitely is not approved by anyone. Justin told me that they haven't approved it themselves. The Lions haven't even had a chance to discuss it.
Okay. Okay, so those are information that will, you know what, let's do something. Are you going to be there for a few minutes? Yeah. Okay. When we'll, when we're going to discuss the spray park, maybe at this point we'll give you a chance to talk about the position of the Lions Park. Would that be okay with you?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, all right. Okay, we have minutes, under five A minutes of the regular council of January twenty-eighth.
Mayor, before we, before we pass a motion to adopt those, are we going to have any discussion on our donation policy?
That's going to be part of, of, uh, something we're going to talk when we talk under six C.
Okay, thank you.
We will. Yeah, it's a good question. All right, so we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes of, uh, January twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty.
All in favor? Thank you. So under six A, the draft by law sixteen seventy-three A, we can pass the first reading of that cannabis control by law. As you could see, it, the only change that we had to do to our policy, because we already had reviewed it quite a bit, uh, is to define what is consumption. That definition is now in there and I think it's pretty good. Unless you feel it might be lacking, please let me know. Councilor Selk?
I'm gonna first reading a bylaw sixteen seventy-three A cannabis control by law amendment.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns? No? All in favor? Thank you. You in favor too, Councilor?
Mayor, maybe for, yeah, for Counselor Brown.
She said, yeah.
I should explain, if she just says verbally in favor or opposed, the act says that if a counselor is here by electronic means, they are deemed to be present at the meeting.
Yes.
So we can't see her. So yeah, just give us an in favor or opposed each time, Counselor.
She didn't make that comment.
Sounds good, I did.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Okay, so it's passed. Let's go to six B. The draft policy, uh, R dash eight dash seven, remuneration of council. This one, I hope we can put it to bed once and for all. Uh, I have worked with Jeff on, uh, reviewing the, the table. I had, uh, worked on that and I think that finally, uh, captures the essence of what we wanted to do. There was still something that I had mentioned to Jeff that might need some tweaking and it was under the Roman numeral, uh, under two, Roman numeral seven. Jeff, did you change it in that packet? So if you want to look at it now, there was some discussion last time that what do we do with counselors that are legitimately sick and shouldn't be at a table because you're going to contaminate us or unable to be, uh, with, uh, some kind of system? What do we do? And I think this addressed that. So if you want to look at it, are you satisfied that that would cover it?
I think it's fine.
You, you, you okay with that, Counselor?
Absolutely.
Okay. So that was a revision from the first writing that you had. Okay, so if you are comfortable with that, I think the table is the one that speaks the, the clearest now as to how we get those on our area given in all situations. Until we come through an exception. Okay? Are we comfortable? If so, let's pass a motion to, to approve that policy. Council Drew?
No, just make a motion to approve draft policy R eight seven, remuneration of council.
Okay, thank you. So that's passed. Thank you so much. Never worked so hard. All in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Never worked so hard on what policy. So six C, uh, requests for donations. So the Rotary Club, as you just heard, uh, is requesting something that we had allowed the Agrodom to do when they did a fundraiser.
Health Foundation.
Oh, the Health Foundation, sorry, I'm wrong. And they had, uh, a hockey tournament, what, ice rink?
Of course, for the Health Foundation.
So which one got the, the ice rink?
So the Agrodom ice rink.
Oh, yeah, I said they get the Agro, or the ice rink, yeah.
Oh, okay, so I really thought there was some, somewhere the rink. Okay, so, uh, when I saw that, I thought, uh, we can donate whatever we want. But sooner or later, we need to kind of, uh, look at it and decide if we shouldn't have a policy in place for large donation. Is something that is in place in a county, I knew about it and I asked Jeff to kind of pull that policy, they have reduced their amount of money by half because times are tough. And the way they have it, there is a pot of money at a discretion of council year by year. And people can only apply for ten percent of that pot, so the pot diminishes with that. So what we need to decide is what is that threshold? They used to have in a county thirty thousand dollars, they now have fifteen. Because it was really constant demand for free this and free that, and I couldn't do it anymore. So what's your, your feeling about that? Should we have a policy in place?
I, I think we should. I remember last year when, um, the Health Foundation had asked, I thought, our discussion was that, yeah, we would do it, but we wouldn't do that every year to the same group. But it would be a different group if they applied that we would look at that and give them that privilege of having it that way. And I think that's part of the policy so that we don't have the same organization coming year after year after year for that, you know, that, uh, free, uh, access for, for a fundraiser.
Because forty-eight hundred dollar, uh, it's a loss of revenue for the, the golf course in some ways.
Yeah.
But it's also has to be recouped from somewhere.
Yeah.
And that somewhere is always a taxpayer. At, at the end, uh, it's always who pays for it. So what we need to decide as a council is maybe what you're saying. Maybe we have to cap the fund and be able to say, uh, the donation will be done on a rotation base.
Yeah.
It could well be that we have that.
I thought we already did that.
I thought that's what we did last year, because that's why I brought it up.
We don't have a policy.
That's what I'm saying, we should do the policy.
Yeah.
Counselor Brown had something to comment.
Counselor Brown?
No, I disagree. We talked about doing that last year. We were gonna make sure that it wasn't the same group getting the funding each and every year that we would try and rotate through.
All right, so essentially, how much do we want to put in that fund?
Okay. I thought we already had a fund established that we were splitting with the county.
That's a different fund. Besides that fund.
How many benevolent funds do we have exactly?
Uh, we have two right now, but they have three.
Okay. Can I look at this a little different way? Yeah, we may be donating green fees for the golf course, but we're also bringing people from out of town into town to our golf course. So there's an advertising slash experience the golf course, hopefully come back element to this.
Okay. So you always look at the economic benefit, which is an important aspect of.
I, I kind of echo that because whatever they raise at the golf course, they're going to spend in town. The Health Foundation, for example, is spending stuff on the hospital. The Rotarians, if they do it, they'll be spending on stuff in town here.
Okay.
So we are donating forty-eight hundred dollars, but I think in-kind money coming back into the town's higher than that.
All right. So essentially, imagine that we had, uh, I mean, there's forty-eight hundred for them. There is about the same for the foundation and it was about half of that for the hockey. So we're talking about ten thousand dollar. So if we had a policy that with that cap of ten thousand dollar, uh, would that be something that we could look at? That, but would you allow, allow them to, uh, every year, apply for the same thing?
The question arises, how many times are we going to allow something to happen out at the golf course per year?
And lose revenue for the golf course?
Lose revenue. Is it going to be a one-time thing per, per unit? Because the town owns the swimming pool, are we going to be asked to donate the, the day for the swimming pool by four different groups? I mean, how many groups are going to ask for that donation of the golf course? And are we going to approve it?
Well, if I understand correctly, when there's a tournament, there's, they kind of close the course for the tournament, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
So when there's a tournament, they kind of close the course for the tournament, is that correct?
Yeah.
So forty-eight hundreds, really, we're not going to see anybody, if they hold that tournament without our money being donated to them, we're still not going to see any revenue from people coming off the street to golf. Because the course will be closed at that particular time. So, and I understand also that we're going to try and work, the, the tournament time's a little bit different so that people can go before the tournament. So correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I think that's what we're looking at.
I am not really, really knowledgeable of all that, sorry.
Okay, so do we want to establish a number? But what if somebody comes and says, well, we don't want the pool, we don't want the rink, we don't want, we just want you to give us ten thousand dollars.
Right.
And it's equivalent to.
That's in your, your ten thousand benevolent fund.
No, I, I really believe that this is why the county has it with a percentage of that fund.
So.
So that it, it allow for people to realize the, the pot is not forever and ever. It, it just can't be.
So wouldn't it be beneficial if we had administration draft up something with all of these considerations?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the administration pulled out the, the county and we can see if that fits us or if we need something more Cartston-like. Jeff?
Um, if I could speak to that for a minute. The trick here is we're talking about in-kind donations. So you have to ask yourself, do you want to tax for a fund to offset the costs of the golf course, for example? So what you'd be doing is, let's use this tournament. Are you going to tax the residents forty-eight hundred dollars and then internally transfer that money that you actually taxed for to golf course revenue? That's one way to do it. It's not wrong. It's just one way to do it. But you're going to tax your residents for that forty-eight hundred. Or are you going to just simply have a forty-eight hundred dollars less revenue at the course and the taxpayer has to make up the difference? The rate payer is the one that makes up the loss of the golf course. They have to.
But which way?
Because we have to balance. So it's really just how you want to look at it. And, you know, with your comment, Counsel Court, you're right that we close the course for the tournaments, but we get the tournament revenue.
Yeah.
Right, so there is forty-eight hundred dollars in cash there that we take in. Um, but in this case, when we waive the fees for a tournament, we get neither. We neither get green fee play nor that. So there, there is a ramification there for the golf course too.
Counselor Selk?
So hypothetically, I understand where you're coming from, Jeff. But suppose that we have enough people who have come to this tournament and then come back and then come back. So then actually, we're gaining revenue in future green fees from people who have come to the tournament.
Those are, those are possibilities that we do not know, right? We, we cannot put the monetary value on that because we don't know.
I do know of one group, there's about forty golfers from Lethbridge that come here every year on a regular basis now because they did attend a tournament when the golf course first was opened up. And they come, they love coming here because they've, they love this course better than they do the courses in Lethbridge. And I've talked to them over the phone. And so I know that they are coming and there's other people too. So I, I, I don't know, I, I kind of look at the, the tax aspect of it. If you break it down, it's about a buck and a half tax per, per, per person for that particular tournament. And it does a lot of good. And I think in, in the end, it, it's offset. I think it's a good thing to bring the, the people here to our community and they will come back even more.
I guess my question is if, if we don't donate the forty-eight hundred dollars, are they not going to have the tournament?
No, so we'll have the tournament no matter what.
Exactly.
That we'll have it.
There'll just be forty-eight hundred dollars, that's what they'll make on it.
The participant in the tournament doesn't know the difference.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't imagine they're waiving fees for the tournament.
Whoever's been at tournaments can be, it'll be forty-eight hundred dollars, that's what they'll make.
Agreed.
You also have to realize that asking for forty-eight doesn't mean that we give them forty-eight. Maybe we give them half of that as a donation, right?
I have a question.
I'm sorry?
She has a question.
No.
Go ahead.
I just have a question. Um, I also think it's important to set a date. So say, um, I know that the county had talked about that they were going to say, as a, a such and such a date, you know, people need to have your applications in, then the council will go ahead and look at the application.
Yeah.
Rather than, I, I, I think that it's important to have a date so that the people within our community that are taxpayers have the opportunity to say, well, I would like to have ice time or I would like to have, that they can put it forward so that it's not just, well, so-and-so asked, so they got it. I think it's important to attach that date.
Counselor Brown, you write on because the, uh, policy of the county has two intake.
Right, right, exactly.
And, and the council is the one who determines.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so thank you. So maybe the recommendation would be to have a council draft. We don't need to approve anything. Their, 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 um, tournament is not before June, so there is time. So we need essentially to have a recommendation for council, for, from can, council to administration.
Make a resolution here, not a recommendation.
Yeah, a resolution to help you draft that. Counselor Drew, you want to do that?
Yeah, I'll make a resolution to have administration draft up a policy regarding donations.
Large donations. All in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so let's carry on. A seven A, A U M A letter. Uh, Jeff, I appreciate your letter. There's, uh, we worked together on the ideas. There's maybe something that council is, uh, at least Counselor Selk wants it softened up when it talked to the large municipalities about their, their position, political position.
I'm trying to register Counselor Selk wanted it softened.
Yeah, yeah, he wants it softened. He wants the language softened.
Processing for a second.
Did I miss something or what is driving this letter?
What is driving this letter is very simple, is what we talked about last, last council. Yeah, you may have missed a bit. I just was telling you that, uh, the A U M A is starting to take positions that are more politicized and is maybe not serving us as well as a body that represents us all. So if you were there last time in Red Deer, you could see how politicized it was. It was absolutely.
Well, I agree with that.
So biased, it was terrible.
I agree with the letter. I a hundred percent agree with what you're saying. I just don't remember us discussing the different political parties and that and the mention of the left-wing, left-wing politicians.
Oh, okay, let me tell you where that came from. That came from the meaning we had a finance, a financial, uh, review that we had for mayors and the C O in Edmonton two weeks ago.
Okay.
And, uh, there was definitely. And there was definitely an agenda there.
Yeah.
And it was not favorable to the government, to say the least. That was my interpretation or my feeling at the time. Jeff, what was your feeling at the time?
It seemed that way, but I do want to touch on the large city piece. Councillor Selk, you're talking about the second-to-last paragraph?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Give me some indication of what, I can definitely tidy it up, it's no problem. Just give me some indication of what areas.
Well, it says that large cities are generally supporters of a left-leaning government. I think I would stroke that out.
Okay.
You know, unless you want to say, well, you know, Edmonton is as orange as a sun-kissed orchard or something like that. I don't know, but...
Okay.
Even if it is true, they are supporters of left-wing. Just look at the two major governments up there.
Yeah, but still, I don't think we need to get down into that.
No, I don't either.
Let's slinging.
Okay.
Is there anything else that you would like to see changed or...
Okay, so we're saying that because the colors at the Red Deer AUMA convention were orange, that they're leaning towards the NDP. Yet the T-shirts they handed out in Edmonton were all blue and white and red, which would suggest UCP colors.
Yeah, I agree with you, too, on that one. But that, you know, the difficulty is as follows. One, you have an organization that represents the whole of Alberta through municipalities that we have, the hundreds we have. They have to be as apolitical as they can be. They need to work under whichever government there is and they need to work together with those governments to make changes for the better for our municipalities. And it seems to me that they're beating the government to pieces in those meetings. And at the last mayor's en rev, it was again quite apparent. And I'm thinking, where are we going here? Yes?
Can I just provide my own experience? Having sat in on a couple of AUMA committee meetings now, is that I think where the AUMA is coming from in a lot of respects is that if you take this letter and you put it beside the letter that we've got in our package from Barry Morishita, he's saying that their frustration is that they're not being consulted on anything, that the province of Alberta has taken a page out of the Donald Trump playbook where we'll do whatever we want and if we want your opinion, we'll ask you for it, but we're not going to. So they're kind of bullying the municipalities and AUMA is taking it from a different tack that perhaps we need to stand up for all of our municipalities and suggest that the province should negotiate and have us at the table. So when it comes to the provincial budget, rather than taking a machete to it, maybe we could help you with a scalpel and do it more...
Yeah, no, I understand that.
I'm not done yet, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm on a rant.
But I'm glad, I'm glad to say that I'm agreeing with you.
Good. The other part of this is that, for instance, you've seen Tanya Thorne in this. And in my experience with Tanya, she's very, very careful about what she says in any political forum.
Yes, she does.
She doesn't say anything that would make us to think that anything that she's at is politicized one way or the other. Now, she has, she made it clear in the meeting I was at last week is that Calgary and Edmonton are taking a beating from the rest of the province for everything that's been implemented by this government. And not that I have particular sympathies for Calgary and Edmonton, however, AUMA is, I guess, sensitive to the fact that the two largest centers are probably taking a political beating for things that the province has done. And I'll give you an example, you know, we are going to recognize a huge increase in our police funding because of the police funding model that the province adopted. AUMA did not recommend that funding model. In fact, they made it clear that it was more of a, let's stay at the lower end of that model and don't go off where the province went, where we're paying significantly more dollars than what AUMA anticipated we'd be paying. So if they're taking the province to task on a lot of these things that they're downloading on to municipalities, like police funding, like the cuts that they're making to MSI funding and all of that, you know, it would be easy if they were to roll along and not, and I get where you're coming from, Mayor, too. It would be easy if the government just rolled along and didn't make any cuts at all. Then it would be easy to support them and AUMA probably wouldn't have a word to say. However, I think they feel like they're representing the municipal membership that they represent by expressing their frustration that these cuts have come with no consultation. The province hired a politician, an ex-politician from the province of Saskatchewan to get our fiscal house in order, rather than asking the ones who were actually, had the boots on the ground in the municipalities, who could have helped them with their budget cuts.
All right, but...
End of rant.
Okay, thank you. But I just want to remind you that the policing cost that came, came directly from an initiative from Barry Morishita, who is the president of that organization, who brought the motion through his town at the AUMA convention. And that was passed without the agreement of all the small municipality. To me, it was a big, big, big mistake.
But he never asked the funding model that he brought forward, that everyone should pay some.
Yeah, well...
He didn't say that we should be carrying thirty or forty percent of those costs. He said that we should be paying some.
Yeah, well, it's unfortunate and now we are paying the cost.
I feel it's unfortunate that it's a common practice that the government looks at Calgary and Edmonton and they say, oh, yeah, we're cutting this and we're cutting that and you can afford to do that. How often do the small communities like Cardston, with a population under five thousand, get the actual representation that they need at those meetings to say, hey, we don't have that kind of money?
Okay.
And we can't afford that cuts. That's my concern is, is AUMA, are they representing the small towns as well as they should?
All right, so here is something I could say. If nothing else, this letter at least allowed our frustration to come out. If we don't send it, it's fine with me. But I really also believe that we don't want an organization that is anti-government the way it appears.
I have a suggestion, Mayor. I assume that you're going to be going to the meeting in March in Edmonton.
Uh, March?
That's the Spring Caucus. I don't, actually, we looked at that, councillor, and the agenda was not great to make a trip to Edmonton and back, and they're doing a summer one in the south.
What we've done, when we were in Edmonton, we talked to Barry and we talked to Tanya about all concerns regarding the, at least the policing model. And we explained our position. And what we have done right now at the last mayor's en rev, for the past two mayors en rev, I have shown to Minister Grant Hunter that the funding model that they have devised is there to penalize us, highly penalize us, in a sense that there are credit given to anybody who in the past managed to get enhanced policing in their town, which we tried to get and were told by the RCMP of the day not to try it because we would not get any more boots on the ground and we would be paying money only to burn out the force that this year is said, go with a CPO level one. So we've done exactly that. But for having done that and having spent the money, as much money as it would have cost us, to have an enhanced police force for us in our town, we spent the same amount of money because we had to get a new truck and we needed to get an upgrade. So what I'm trying to have the government do now for us, small communities, is to give us the same credit as any other town if we have a CPO one. Because we've done it to improve safety and security, not to avoid paying into policing costs. But right now, I show them the way the formula is designed is going to be a double whammy for us and we won't get another person in our detachment. So it's not right.
I believe it's time that we probably should invite our local MLA to one of our council meetings, express our concerns to him.
Go ahead.
I have a comment and then a suggestion.
Go ahead.
Okay. I appreciate the policing model, but overall and what we're talking about in this letter, perhaps it would be better served if we actually invited Tanya Thorne down to one of our council meetings because she is the director of Towns and Villages South and we can express our concerns in a face-to-face meeting.
Good.
The second thing I would suggest is if you want, if you still are bent on sending this letter, you might want to consider that it's, there's an element of the policymakers at AUMA that's influencing a lot of this as opposed to the executive. So if you want me to say that the policymakers are left-leaning at AUMA or the policy analysts, more correctly, are somewhat left-leaning, I'd agree with you.
Well, it's come, it's come out pretty clear in the meetings we were at.
So a suggestion, councillor Selk, is that we...
We hang on to the letter.
We hang on to the letter and invite Tanya Thorne down to our council. I'd go along with that.
Yeah, if there's no resolution to send it, then it just won't go anywhere. It's fine with me.
It's fine, it's just...
Yeah, we can hang on to it, but it can just...
It just points that needed to be put on paper somewhere.
Are you venting?
Well, we can review that letter with Tanya Thorne when she comes.
Again, letters are a good way of getting their attention. I don't think we got their attention yet. I mean, this pacing, the whole, everything else, I mean, they sent out that survey that you sent to us. I feel that, I was a little harsh with AUMA because I don't think they're, I don't feel like they're supporting the small towns like they should.
But they didn't represent us well.
Councillor Selk sits with that board more than I do, but...
I had some concerns with the, with the second paragraph there. I, I, the concern is that it really is real. That's a, that's a real perception. When, when the government changed four years ago and we were at AUMA, if you'll recall, we were sitting in there and they were playing the music, it was upbeat and everything, and just as they started the introduction, they switched the colors, which I've always felt were AUMA colors. They switched the colors to orange and I felt, I just cringed. I just cringed. And then I looked around all the tables and saw all the cities and they were just, oh, they were just adamant, they were so awesome. They were so glad that the NDP got in and, you know, granted, they got in, but the fact is that it was shown so much, the AUMA bent to their will, changed the colors, they've always been that blue and green color, they switched it to a government color, and that to me became a political forum that day. And I was very concerned and disturbed by it.
All right, so do you know what?
But, and I agree with this, but I think that, I think before we sent this letter, I think Tanya would be better, it'd be better to have her here, express our concerns and then we'll look at it, see what we need to do.
No problem, no problem. But I really think at least we have points of discussion with her.
I don't want them to get mad at our community.
Oh, not to worry.
It's, I don't want to point fingers either.
All right, so thank you. Seven B tax...
Are you going to make a resolution to invite Tanya, direct the administration to invite Tanya?
Do you want to do that, councillor?
I'll make the motion that we invite Tanya Thorne to a future council meeting.
Sure. Thank you. All in favour? Thank you very much. Good point, councillor, thank you.
Yeah.
It's my turn, you're still awake.
Under seven B tax deferral proposal. As you could see, there is a lengthy explanation there regarding that piece, a specific piece of property. And I honestly believe that the town has used a new MGA, possibilities that are given to municipalities now to defer taxes, is something that exists in many jurisdictions. In BC, we have that. And it allows for people to kind of be helped when they need help. So in that sense, you could see that for the taxes, I think the tax are altogether seven hundred fifty or something like that, are you...
Over seven hundred fifty.
Yeah, something like that. Anyway, so five hundred will be paid annually and the difference will be, will be deferred. And it's deferred to a maximum as per the Act for ten years. Okay? So if that is something that you feel comfortable with, we need to probably have a motion to approve that?
There's a resolution at the bottom of the R D.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we mention the name?
No, well, you can't.
He's presented publicly.
Yeah, you can do that.
Has he been consulted on this and how does he feel?
This is something that has come as a result of a consultation with the landowner.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Go ahead, councillor.
We moved by councillor Selk to defer a portion of the property tax of Mr Sheen at six five one Fifth Avenue East. Weigh the penalties on the deferred tax for up to ten years as per the present, presented agreement.
Without penalties, right? That's what it says?
Yep.
Yeah, all right. So questions? Sing on, all in favour? Thank you. You okay, councillor Brown, with this one?
Yeah, she said yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, recommendation from CCW, Westwind Wrestling. So we need someone to make a motion ahead, made the recommendation, that's a donation of two thousand dollar.
Also move that we make the donation of two thousand dollars.
Okay.
And it's taken out of, what is it taken out of?
The benevolent fund.
Yeah.
It's an opportunity initiative.
Right, opportunity initiative for the Westwind Wrestling Club.
All in favour?
Yeah.
Thank you. The next one is to allow councillor Barnes to go to a library conference and have his two-day per diem paid. Councillor Drew?
I'll make that motion that councillor Barnes be approved for the two-day per diem.
Okay, all in favour? All right, so now let's go and try to discuss the issue with the park, the spray park. And Andy, there was an item there that you say, because you parked of the Lions Park and that's part of the relocation. Can you come to the pulpit and help us understand what we need to know?
I'm Andy Strang. I am the longest-serving member of the Lions Club in Cardston at the present time. I have most of the records of the club and the, I'm sort of the historian. I checked it out and the Lions Park was originally built in the early years of forties and fifties, along with the original swimming pool, by the Lions Club. In nineteen seventy-five, an agreement was made between the town administration and I presume it was council's blessing, that the park would be turned over to the town from the Lions Club. And that happened in nineteen seventy-five, seventy-six. Incidentally...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
At that particular time, I believe that the Zibo building was built. The Lions Club, in the agreement with the town in nineteen seventy-five, seventy-six, the information that I have was that the Lions Club would be kept up to date on what was happening in the park. And that a member of the Lions Club would be on the recreation committee of the town. That hasn't been the case. And as far as updates, the last few things that have happened in the park are indication that being kept up to date has not happened. When it was... up to date has not happened. When it was decided, uh, to turn over the, the bottom of the bowl to the school and make a, a track and a football field, um, the Lions Club was never consulted, "What do you think of this?" or anything else. Not that they would have been able to veto it or anything. It was just done. And then, more recently, when the playground was going to be put in there, it was just done. We heard on the street, like everybody else, that this was gonna be done. It was gonna be put in the Lions Park. That's it. And, um, it was very difficult to get any information. I tried multi-times to get information from primarily the Rotarians, uh, as to what are you going to, how big is it gonna be? What are you going to do? Where are you gonna put it? How far is it from the Ball Diamond? Is it going to remove the big rock? Uh, is it going to take any buildings out? What about trees? And I found out more about that playground by actually going down there for the two days when they were installing it and working and talking to people there than I had ever been able to find out before. And I, that bothered me. Then, when this spray park thing came along, it's, we've been told multi-times that they're going to take the gazebo out. And it wasn't until fairly recently that we were told that if it's taken out, then something comparable has to be put in place. Just, uh, yesterday, uh, was the first time that I ever heard this, uh, suggestion that, uh, the Lions Club and the Rotary would work together. And that was from Justin Low, who called me and said, "Uh, do you think the Lions Club would be willing to partner with the Rotary on this $25,000 item, uh, $10,000 each, and, uh, $5,000 from the town to do it?" Did you know you were committed to $5,000? Uh, and I said, "Well, definitely, uh, the Lions would have to be asked about it." I'm sure as the heck not, the, the, the controller of the Lions Funds, um, it has to be approved. It has to be discussed. And I don't know. Well, Justin said, "It hasn't been discussed at the Rotary yet either." And that was confirmed by another member of the Rotary Club, um, who was here tonight. Um, so that, that's a, a very big question mark there under Lions. Um, a couple of, two or three weeks ago, in the effort to find the last few bucks for this spray park, the Lion, the Rotary Club asked, "Would the Lions be willing to, to put up some money?" And the answer was, "Sorry, we have been asking and asking and asking. What are you doing?" And never getting an answer. And the, um, band director for the high school band came to the Lions Club and asked for some assistance for a band shell, and the Lions Club have taken that on. So, we spent our money. And so, that makes that question mark even bigger. Um, I don't want to portray the idea that Andy Strang is opposed to the spray park or going to put a rock in the way of it. And I certainly don't want to extend that opinion from the, from the Lions Club. I don't think that the Lions Club are opposed to anything that's an improvement to the town, but it's a perception that we are sure not handled very nicely. And apparently, the town council have the same opinion about how they're being treated by their senior organization. Any questions?
I think that's a fair comment, Andy.
Counselor Bengri.
Andy, being a past president of the Lions Club and also the Rotary Club, I, uh, I echo your comments. The Lions Club at one time, when I was the president, had upwards of over 40 members. We were a large club. We did a lot for the community. We did a lot for the Lions International Blind. Uh, the gazebo was built in commemoration of one of those longstanding Lions, and that was Bert Gibb. And he was a past district governor and so forth. Um, so with that in mind, we have a swimming pool down there. There was originally Lion Swimming Pool and Waiting Pool. We had the Waiting Pool up on the Third Avenue. Uh, Rotary Park, it's got one downed by the, uh, the, uh, government building. That's supposed to be the Rotary Park, and this was the Lions Park. I don't think, I echo what you say, that, that the Lions are opposed to anything that makes our community a better place to live. I certainly wouldn't be if I was a member of the Lions. But at the same token, I'd want some kind of recognition that both clubs are working together. That's what needs to be done. So, I don't know how to accomplish that.
Counselor Barnes?
It's always been my understanding that there had been communication regarding the, the playground down there, the Rotary Playground. I, I thought there, there was, and so I guess I'm pretty naive, because I, I thought that there was collaboration between the two, uh, clubs when it come to doing that. Just a comment.
Anybody else?
I have a comment and a question.
Go ahead, Counselor Brown.
Um, Mr. Strang, I apologize. I'm not there that I can't look you in the eye, but, um, I, I do feel bad that you feel like your club has not, um, been given the, um, the, yeah, just the consideration that you haven't been consulted in regards to some of these massive programs. Um, I, I truly believe in what you're saying, that, that your club is, um, um, for doing positive things from within the community, because I, myself, have seen it. My kids have received scholarships, um, on behalf of your club. But I guess my question to you would be this. Um, do you believe personally, because of course you can't speak on behalf of your, everybody else, but your personal opinion, I guess I'm asking is, do you believe that the spray parks down there, having the camp kitchen, um, where it is, do you believe that that camp kitchen should remain? Or do you believe it should stay? And something else could be put in there, um, that would be a little bit more proactive to the area?
In response to that, first off, I, I have been told that that is the most expensive place that was considered for placing the spray park. It was going to cost the most money to put it in that location. Um, that doesn't ride very well. Um, secondly, um, the discussion earlier this evening about a three-quarter inch line to service this spray park, um, I have some experience in 35 years working with irrigation in this area that I can, from our irrigation district experience, practically guarantee, but that's a pretty dangerous thing to do, to guarantee something. But the three-quarter inch line is not gonna be adequate, and there will be future costs to upgrading, even to keep on running the spray park. And especially if it, if the gazebo thing is moved or replaced with something else, the possibility that that place should also have water service, I would think, would be quite great. Um, and so, I don't think that the spray park in that location was the best choice.
But do you, sorry, Mayor, if I can just...
Go ahead.
Have a second. But do you believe that the camp kitchen itself is, should be left in place? Or would you be okay with something else in that area?
If it didn't cost money to, $25,000 to somebody to replace it, um, a new facility would be fine. But $25,000 out of our community, whether it comes from Rotary Club, Lions Club, the town, uh, grants, however it comes from, it's, it's the public's money, $25,000, that is being unnecessarily spent to replace something that is questionable, uh, in its utility. It doesn't get treated very well. It doesn't get used very well. It does get used for inappropriate purposes. And so, I think moving it is just adding another cost.
Okay, thank you.
Andy, then, let me ask Ms., let me ask you something regarding what you just said. If the pavilion, that is there, the camp kitchen, I mean, the gazebo that is there right now, needs to be removed to put the spray park, are you saying maybe best not to replace it? Is that maybe one?
If you went back three or four steps, I'm saying that I don't agree that that's the best place for the spray park from a number of...
No, I'm trying to understand. No matter what, with that gazebo, you're saying it's not used properly, should it be then, no matter what the future is, should it be removed? Would you, as a, as a club, accept to see it removed, but not specially replaced with a, with a spray park? That's what you're trying to, to say? Is that the option?
The only, the only reason that the subject of removing it has come up is because whoever, and it has been, um, the, the fingers have been pointed back to the town council, said that that's where it should be.
Interesting.
Rotary sure don't acknowledge that they said it's gonna be there. I acknowledge the fact that the Lions Club turned that park over 45 years ago. And so, it's the towns. Really, the Lions Club don't have a bone to pick with the Rotary because they don't have a say. It's the towns who decides where to put it.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Now, we maybe have a few more things to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Andy.
Thanks, Andy.
So, here we are, councilors. We now heard the position of the Lions Club, and, uh, I regret that there was no communication with them. I really do regret that, because I should have been at the table as much as the Rotarians should have been there. So, what do we do from here on? There's another solution. The solution is to look at it as we, uh, had proposed. In fact, Counselor Bengri was probably the greatest proponent of it at the time, is to look at the, uh, old skate park. And, uh, we have some costs. I don't know if we have all the costs, but we have an idea how much it would cost to put it there.
Sometime as a council, we're damned if we do, damned if we don't. We had this discussion about that location, and was, and the council felt that was a proper location because of location next to the playground, et cetera. Obviously, it's not the best location for a lot of people. At least, they don't think it's the best location.
Oh, it's not the best location.
That was a discussion that we decided as a council. Now, could it go some other place? Probably.
I would, I, as a counselor, and, and myself, I'd ask that we take this back to our administration and ask our administration to take his people that are on board, such as our town foreman and our, uh, planner, and, and look at the costs of both locations and make a suggestion from those costs from, from our, from our community works, public works. I mean, they know what's in the ground. They know what that swimming pool infrastructure can handle. And I, I positively think that that is the location for that spray park.
Counselor Selk?
I'm gonna completely disagree.
It's all right.
That's good.
That's why we're on that table.
Because I think that we have had some discussion about the old skateboard park being used for possibly a pickleball complex going forward. So, there is another use for it.
Well, I didn't hear about that one, but possibly...
Pretty sure you were at the table.
Well, you know, it's quite possible. I don't remember that one.
I, I do know the original spot that the Rotarians wanted was up on Town Square. The concern there, of course, is that ball, softball's flying everywhere, and it's kind of isolated up there, so...
Not the right place. Okay, Counselor Drew, any, any idea, any feelings regarding that?
I, I just, I think, and maybe I'm mistaken, but I thought that there was some communication that there was some workings between the Lions Club and Rotary. So, I'm, and I don't know, and maybe you can refresh my memory, but...
No.
I...
It was always the intent that we, as council, always wanted to see that communication happen. But it appears from what Andy is saying that it didn't happen until yesterday, which is unfortunate.
If you recount, uh, I suggested six months ago that these two clubs get together and work this out. And, uh, I knew it wasn't happening.
Counselor Barnes?
I, I'm baffled, because I thought there was communication too. Uh, and, and my, my, um, approval of the location was based on thinking that that communication had taken place.
Yeah. I, I was hoping that...
I feel the same way. Maybe administration needs to take a look at that with the, the maintenance department and, and the engine, and the, um, planning and go from there.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Counselor Brown.
Okay. So, I understand. We all feel terrible that the two clubs never got together and that they weren't able to work together on this. But the moral of the story is, they didn't, for whatever reason. And also, that the Lions Club is offended breaks my heart. That's unfortunate. It's a small community. However, that said, we have a spray park that Parks and Rec Board, it went to them. Um, we did talk to Jeff about this. We did talk to Randy Russell about this. All of the people that I'm aware of have been talked to about this site. And this site was chosen for many reasons. It came to council. It was put forward. It's my understanding, council had agreed to this. Okay, maybe we didn't know that, you know, the Lions weren't, uh, asked or whatever. But the moral of the story is, this council approved it. So, the real question is, are we approving this extra $30,000 to come up and, so that they can finish the spray park? I mean, really, that's what this boils down to, doesn't it? Like, isn't it a little late in the ballgame? I feel like it's a little late in the ballgame for us to go, "Ha, joke. We're gonna move locations." Like, that just, I just feel like that, we're... locations, like that just, I just feel like that, we're, it's just, it's wrong.
Well, essentially, the location, the, the location is what caused the extra costs that they don't have money for. So essentially, the extra costs are, are really, no matter what, the location has something to do with putting a line there, and that's a cost of a line, no matter what. So, I don't know what the cost would be, if the spray park was in the other location, I don't know, I don't have the figures.
Well, I mean, sorry, Mayor, if I can.
Go ahead.
Having it at Town Square, well, that was completely taken off the table for safety. It wasn't even money, it was safety. It was taken off, it was taken off down by the courthouse, because they didn't feel like that, the Rotarians didn't like that location, they didn't feel like it was, um-
There's no parking down there.
Exactly, that just wasn't ideal, and there were no bathrooms, so there was gonna be that expense. Like, every area had its own set of costs, that was all looked at. So, we know what these costs roughly-ish are. I guess my question to Jeff would be, so, do we have, so, they're asking for, you know, almost thirty thousand, twenty-nine thousand dollars extra, is that doable?
It's in kind, right?
Everything is doable, if you want to make it happen, but you have to decide, is that the right things to do to, to burden the taxpayer? Is that a decision we make, yes or no?
If, if, if I can suggest that this council only approved this project in principle.
Agreed.
We did not pass anything other than in principle, and to me, that can be changed.
Well, what we had approved first was seventy thousand dollars.
Exactly.
Then we approved the extension, because that didn't have enough money. So, we said ninety-seven thousand dollars, except that right now, we need to find another thirty thousand plus, because there is a shortage. But, the first item has to do with the site preparation. On the site preparation, they're looking for a donation of nine thousand dollars, about nine thousand forty-five dollars. So, that is cost that is incurred in, in-house, fair enough, but is still incurred, right? So, that is something we can look at. The other one is a little bit more complicated, based on the assumption that the park will be where it was decided by council to be, which was in Alliance Park, unfortunate that there was no communication. So, here is the issue, what do we do with the water supply? We do not know that that line can supply everything, and if we need to look forward to the future, would it then be reasonable to start to look at it in a grander scheme of things, which is that if the school wanted to add change rooms, or whatever, we need water supply, and in order to have water supply, a three-quarter inch pipe is not going to do it. We know that. Yes.
Okay. A comment and a question, if I may.
Go ahead.
We, whether we did this in principle or not, we decided that that was probably the best location.
Yeah.
And, and walking back from that now just makes us look foolish.
Yeah.
Comment. Two, Jeff, I have a question about our financial statements, if I can. On page three of the financial statement, so, our financials run from the calendar year, that's our, that's our fiscal year?
Yep.
So, under the total parks in Iraq, it says we fully budgeted one point six million?
Let me go there, councillor.
And the actual was one point four million? Is that a final number? Like, do we have some latitude there?
You may have some stuff that'll roll forward, you may have some things that are incomplete, I'd have to really drill down on each of those things at this point.
Because there's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars right there.
Okay, so, here is always, the trick is finding that pot of money, right? So, two questions. One, are we going to see a donation of nine thousand dollars in kind from the town to see that project? Two, are we going to start to look at water line that will be for the future, and is, would it be right to have the Lions participate somewhat, even if it is twenty percent? Twenty percent of thirty thousand is six thousand dollars? Or ten, whatever the percentage might be, over time?
You said Lions, I assume you meant-
The Rotary, sorry.
Lions made it clear, they're not participating.
Yeah, no, they're not participating.
Just a comment and an observation, I, I attend a lot of football games down there, have over the years, something has to be done. I don't know if you have a plan for the future, for, the bathroom there's disgusting, smells terrible, everything that goes with it. Are we gonna start enhancing that area a little bit more for the town? And yes, I believe a hundred percent that the school division should be involved in that. If we are, then that water line needs to be expanded. I think we have a lot of things going on down there, partying, etc., etc. The facilities for it are not up to, up to snuff, they're just not good enough.
Okay.
So, as far as planning for the future in that water line, I think that's gonna be one of our considerations.
Okay.
Can I add something?
Go ahead, Councillor, and Councillor Drew needs to say something.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Go ahead, Councillor Brown.
Oh, okay, so, I, I would just add to what Councillor Court just said, and, but the timing of this is beautiful, and the reason is, is because we are right now in negotiations, as you all know, with West Wind School Division, on a joint use agreement. So, the door is open, as far as what the wants are, what the needs are for down there. So, it, I mean, I hear what the mayor's saying, I agree. I mean, money doesn't grow on trees, or if it does, we haven't found it yet, but the trick is, we have the door open with West Wind, we can bring this up with them, we can, we can, I, I think we should agree to this, and we should go hunting for some money, is what I think.
Good. Councillor Drew.
I just, I, I appreciated the history that was given, and in nineteen seventy-five, the Lions basically gave us that park and its town property. I was feeling a little bad, but really, it's our decision, right? It's our property, and it's, it's under our control, and I feel bad that maybe the Rotary and the Lions haven't communicated, but as a town, that's our property, and we need to go forward and do what we need to do.
What is the sad story in the presentation, was that we're supposed to have representation at the, at the recreation board, and that never happened, and I don't know why historically it didn't happen.
Maybe in a bylaw in nineteen seventy-four.
And honestly, it was before my time, and I don't know nothing about it.
Forty-seven years ago.
And no one ever complained in the past nine years I've been on council, so.
Councillor Selk, you made a, you made a statement that I, I have to disagree with you.
Good.
Whenever the council can save the taxpayers money, we're not going backwards, we're, we're progressing, we're, we're thinking as a, as a council, we have to look at all projects of what it costs our taxpayer. And if we can save fifty thousand dollars by a different location, then we need to be looking at that very seriously, or whatever. And I, I can understand that we need to enhance our, our football field with, with change rooms and so forth like that, but could we get somebody else online to do that? You know, could there be an involvement of the Lions Club with the school division in, in building dress rooms? I don't know.
As you heard, as pent the money, so I have another project. So, at this point, we left with a Rotary Club that has done an awful lot for the town. The scaling down of the project is another possibility that can be entertained, but I do not know at all what the challenge is.
See.
I, I do not know, I have no idea what it represents.
And I, I've watched, as I've driven by Fort McLeod and looked at their spray park, it's not very big, it's well utilized, but it's not very big.
No, it isn't.
And what, what I was, the, the three-ring circus thing that they talked about, maybe, you know, there's toddlers, and there's little older, and then older, I think, I think it sounds like a great park, and I don't know that we would wanna downscale that at all, but.
What we don't know is what would be the price difference. You have to have a base in there, you've gotta have the water.
I have no idea.
So, is it gonna be another twenty thousand, make an extra pot, or, we don't know that. If it's, it's minimal, then why would you, why would you go smaller?
Essentially, Councillor Selk suggested that maybe we need to use a pocket of reserve, maybe that is in the recreation budget, if there is anything in there, that would be the first place where we can draw some money to begin with. The other pocket of money is council reserves.
Just one other concern I may have, if we decide not to go forward with this, they've listed a lot of donors, and they've said there's a lot more that have put a lot of money into this, a lot of time is, if we change it now, or decide not to do it-
Yeah.
-what is the future gonna be with those particular donors?
I really honestly believe that we need to rally up at this point, unfortunately, I don't like to be pushed against the wall, but at this point, at the eleventh hour and fifty-ninth-
Minute.
Minute, I don't know, what do you do? Except try to rally up and try to see it through. But what is certain, I really think we need to have something in place to help clubs understand that as much donation as I raise for whatever project, I need to respect our financial constraints, and work with us to start with, because that's always been the issue from day one with this project. The other project was in line with our budget, it worked like hand in glove, this one hasn't. And it has caused a lot of difficulty, and worries, because I want it done, and for us, it has been constant worries also. Is there something that administration would like to add at this point?
Shem should be here with food for just a minute, I have a number of things I'd like to add at this point, yes. Do you want me to go tell the food's here?
Please, go ahead.
Okay. So, I met with Rotarians a couple times over the last few days, I, I actually didn't agree with a lot that, that Mr. Strang said, I met with him for an hour yesterday, and he didn't wanna come back to council after that meeting, but whatever. He was here. I disagree that the Lions weren't aware of what's been going on the last few months. I met with Andy in November, I met with Zenith in December, on this exact topic of the building. I went to Zenith's store to visit with her, I met with Andy here in this building, but at this point, we still have an unfunded project.
That's right.
I wasn't telling them that any hammer or demolition was occurring on their building, because there was no funding to execute the project. And that was been my posi, that has been my position. Right now with Rotarians, they have, they have three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. They are short a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars to pull off this project if we, well, and that's with the number of people doing different things to offset costs. And we've committed ninety-seven thousand dollars, and the initial commitment was cash and in-kind expenses. So, they're looking to us to make up all the difference between their three hundred and seventeen and wherever this project lands, and I fear there's a contingency here. That's my concern. So, I can't tell you what that top end is exactly, but when it's seven-eighths built, who's gonna finish it?
Yeah.
You can't just leave it sit there, that would be irresponsible in another way, right? So, it's gotta be finished, and it's gotta be done. And there doesn't seem to be an appetite to scale the project to meet the budget, and the expectation is simply that you're now politically have your backs to the wall, because local community members have donated, and you'll let them down if you don't concede all the money necessary to finish it. So, I do take exception to that respectfully. Well, I get along good with the Rotary guys, we meet a lot, we have good discussion. I wanna talk a little bit about the perceived costs, so, I don't know if another location's better, but the cost, this one, when we looked at all the sites in, I think it was in July, I believe, we looked at a number of sites and utility extension, we looked at them through the lens of it not being a research system, it was a dump system. So, it required extensive water infrastructure at every site. So, sites like Sunset Park weren't great, because it's in a non-pressurized zone, and the sheer demand on this would lose everybody's pressure for blocks around, you know, there was, there was issues with each one. With a research system, we don't have that problem, but we do have an acute issue at Lions Park. So, we have a shallow line that has to be blown out every year, that has low capacity, and everything there's on a pump station. I completely agree with Councillor Court saying, we've gotta do something with the water supply in that area at some point, because it's barely adequate for what we have there. It's, it's just not there. So, I'm not proposing that the Rotary Club, no matter what we do, would pay that twenty-four thousand dollars for a water line, I don't think that's reasonable, they might be a piece of it, that, that could be something to discuss, but I don't think it would be reasonable to say that they should pay for that whole line to go through there, that, it just happens to be a long ways away. That's the kicker with this location, it's all the way from Fourth Avenue, where you come into the pool, that's where the main is. So, it's just a lot of work to get a water line all the way around. So, it, it will cost us to do it, but it doesn't mean that we have to allocate all those costs to, to this project at all. As far as the sanitary sewer supply, that one's a little trickier, because when they build these buildings to house the mechanics, everything is sloped into a pit in the building. Okay, so, all the outside lines that supply water, they slope downhill into a pit, and that pit then drains into the main. That's how you evacuate the lines, when you need to drain the lines, and so there isn't water sitting in them as well, they evacuate into a pit, and then they're refilled from a tank. So, there will be some considerable excavation that will be required to get them to the main, they gotta go out to the main. The initial thought was, when I've met with Rotarians, is, well, we'll just connect into the bathroom sanitary that's there, because it's very little that has to drain, the problem is, I need to be eight feet deep, so I won't, I won't hit the ma, the, the service line for the washroom there, I'll be at a different depth. So, there is some work that has to be done, there's not a ton of materials in it, and that's one thing to consider here, and we'll use the site preparation. There's a materials column where we estimated our materials, those are, that's checks we will have to write to third parties. But the town labor and machine time is something that we can look to help with, if council's okay being, say, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars into this project. If you're comfortable with that, we, you know, the, a lot of that is labor and machine time. But we've always taken a cost accounting approach, where we allocate the costs of the project to the project. So, in my opinion, they still have a ways to go. They're, they got some money to raise here still, or you can choose to waive, can we find the money? Probably. You know, we can make it work. At the worst case, it's a, it's a reduction in public, uh, public works, major utility capital or something, but it's not a huge one. And I don't know how parks or land, Councillor Selk, because I just don't know yet, I gotta see what's undone, or un, that didn't get finished, that may roll over and needs funded, those are all those things that are gonna come out between now and the audit, so we're not far from knowing, we'll know that soon enough. So, I had just a couple other notes here, the, the darn water line, this is the headache, because if it was full of water now, we could go turn the concession taps on, flush toilets, and see if we still have any water coming out, where we would supply the overflow tank, but it's evacuated for winter, because it's not buried deep. So, we have to blow it out every winter, and I, I'm not particularly comfortable filling it full of water right now, because it's supposed to be nine below tonight. So, timing is a bit of a kicker there, because we changed from a dump system to a research system, so the requirement changed over the winter here. And I did have some conversation with Rotarians today, well, I should say with Justin and with Ben, about location changes, would it be entertained? What, what would their thoughts be? And of course, it comes with some concern, we're ways down the road here, right? So, more than anything for them, I interpreted, that their concern was they wanted it to be a open- be an open, free facility that you didn't have to pay an admission for, and putting it fenced in with a pool would cause that. Now, you could have good arguments on both sides of that, because the less contained it is, the less secure it is, our maintenance costs are unfortunately probably going to go up, our, some of those issues will go up on us because it's open, and we can't do anything about that. So, we did ask BDI today to give us some idea, for example, of if it gets contaminated, how do you rectify that? Do you have to drain the whole system out, hyperchlorinate the whole system, research the whole system for a day? Like, there's some processes we got to figure out here, because if we're exposed to constant contamination there for one reason or another, it might be closed half the time, but we don't know that yet, we're waiting for... So there's still a lot up in the air. I think my point of this little long rant is, there's a number of details to still work out, and I appreciate that the Lions did not feel like they had a definite position from the town on this, and I would say that, because as I stand here today, I don't have a definite position of how this water park's going, and what we're doing exactly, right? It's still a bit ambiguous, and that's what I've explained to them since November. So that's, that's where I'm at, council needs to have some discussion as to how much you're willing to put into this to bridge the gap. You're in for 97 now, and how much further do you want to go? And we can probably figure it out financially, but I don't know where the ceiling is on that. I'm worried about contingencies on it, too.
Jeff, you're saying they're short $120,000, does that include our 97,000?
No, so, so they're, they're at 317.
Does beyond and above?
No, 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 sorry. They're short 121, add our 97, and they're the difference.
Okay, so you...
Yeah, 25-ish thousand.
Because you had me a little concerned here, I was like, you won't...
No, 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 no.
Now we're not talking the same story anymore.
Sorry about that.
So Jeff?
It's still at 24,000 of the water line.
Yeah, so that's my question, so the 25,000 and the 4,000, or 5,000 and 24,000, that...
30,000.
That's the difference that we would kick in.
Actually, now I want to take one step back on that, because I don't think I counted that, assuming that we weren't going to allocate them that whole cost. So, just aside, let me do some quick math here. So they need, that's nine, eleven, five, twelve, five, thirteen, five, hundred. I need to look at my scribbles a little closer, just to make sure I got that here. They're at 317, BDI's quote alone was 424, so even between our money and BDI's quote with no other costs, we're still 10 grand short.
That's...
Just in that alone.
Okay, they said that we're going to come up probably with another little bit, 6,000 more or something, so we...
I have a question.
Go ahead councillor.
So, I guess this is a Jeff question, but so Jeff, if in fact we were to put this new line in, this whatever, $24,000 new line, into the area where the spray park is going, would, would we be able to have, would that allow our rec, our bathrooms at Lions Park to stay open all year round, so that they could be used, they could be used all year round?
Good question, my first answer is no, because the fixtures will still freeze up.
Right.
Okay.
So...
I just, I know a lot of people are, you know, they, they want us to have public bathrooms that can be used, and so, I'm just thinking of this line, and I'm just, I'm just wondering down there if that would not be an answer, like, an answer on a couple of questions that are out there.
Yeah, I think you'd still have a concern with your fixtures, your toilets and sinks and those supplies still freezing up, because I don't know how we'd keep it, I mean, you could heat it, obviously.
But now we're adding more cost.
Well, there's a bit of a cost factor, but you're also adding massive, what's the word I want here?
Housing?
An inappropriate use factor here, if now we have heated bathrooms all winter in the park...
Right.
But we're going to have some extensive use there.
Right. Thank you.
I just got, I just got this text, I'm assuming it's from Justin. He says, I'll read it and take it for what it's worth.
Yeah.
He puts, I'm not sure if I'm allowed to text you this, but we forgot to say that a large portion of that $30,000 for the water line and sewer is labor and machine time, so that is money that is paid to town employees anyway, it's just allocating their time to that instead of something else. Actual cash costs is estimated at $12,000.
Yeah, correct.
We understand that, yeah. We understand that, yeah.
Yeah, totally agree.
Just throwing out another idea here, and maybe it's nothing, but I was looking at, you know, the spray park, instead of over here, you know, you have that little area there that's just kind of a little overflow parking, isn't that a big enough area? And then, because there's a roadway that goes out there, and I, and it comes around this way, you can go out this way, you can go out that way by the school division office, wouldn't that be a kind of a little direct line from beside the pickleball? It wouldn't affect this area here at all.
You are limiting some parking that gets used a lot of it, it gets used as a parking lot there quite a bit, but unless you're further away from the bathrooms.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, you'd have to build some washrooms probably, and a few other amenities like that.
Right over here.
And you're not much further for the water line there. You're just hanging a left instead of a right.
I just thought it would save some money ripping apart that gazebo and...
Councillor Selk?
Okay. In the interest of time...
That's why it's warm.
I would like to move that we fund the water and sewer lines out of recreation reserves, and fund this park where it's been allocated or where we've decided previously, and move on.
Can you add a contingency also, if we had need for contingency to be taken out of the same?
What the mayor said. I agree.
Also, I think we need to be in conjunction with the West Winds and see if there's some money there, because they're the main users of that football field.
Good luck.
I'm just saying.
And presumably, the, who knows, the elementary school may want to take some of their kids down there, preschool.
What's our job?
All right, so we have a motion on the table, thank you councillor Selk. Jeff, want to add something?
It's unusual for me to ask a question on a motion, but if I could.
Sure.
Yes.
So as I'm, the, let's see, we have the $424,000, that's BDI's quote, which by the way, we put that out to Tinder and got four bids, and they were the good bid, I just want to point that out. We have 24,000 estimated for the water line, 5,575 for the sewer connection, which is what you're addressing in your resolution, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to ask for clarity, outside of those three line items, there's another $16,000 there, and if you go around, down the total column there on the right, and add up what we haven't talked about, there's another $16,000 there. They don't have that covered either.
9,000 was a donation from the site preparation, right?
But, but, correct, that's nine of it, but then there's another seven.
Yes.
And 2,460, 1,500, 1,000, 2,000, those things.
Okay, Jeff?
Are we also willing to be standing that? I just want to know if you wanted to include it in your resolution.
Jeff, Jeff, may I address a little something out of that?
You're the chair.
The $9,000, I believe, was something we need to look at. The other difference, as I say, they're almost there, if we could take care of those two items, that would take care of the difference, that's what they said.
They feel they could get another $6,000 or so, yes, correct.
That's what they said.
Yeah.
So in that, in that sense, I really believe that the motion should have that donation in kind, the water line, which is going to benefit further facilities, no matter what, it would be nice if that could give us some towards it, but I doubt that I can. And we need to have a little bit of leeway, if you need contingency money, all that should come out of that reserve for recreation. Hopefully, the difference in the budget, the actual, towards the budgeted, will allow us for a little over it, if that is the case. Is there something there that you, you could live with it? If not, I suppose, once we know the audit number better, it will have to come out of council reserve.
We always have a meeting right before the audit where we come to you and say, you had this little surplus in this area, this surplus in this area, where do you want to assign it? And I'm hopeful, knock on wood, that we have that same surplus discussion this year, I think we will. So, I just don't know the exact number yet.
Okay, so maybe if we leave it a little bit broad, essentially to be taken out of the recreation?
Well, and again, you can think now to say, when that conversation happens, our resolution will be to put the surplus in recreation reserves.
Yes.
So, it'll either come out of budget surplus and/or reserves, is that...
Yeah, or it can be, we simply will put all the surplus in a reserve and take it out of a reserve.
Okay.
Right? That, your motion will still work for the location, that's fine.
All right, so honestly, I really, I'd never like to be put against the wall, but at this time, with all the money that I raised, and a park we will get, unfortunate for the Lions, I don't really know what we do with the camp kitchen, if they really themselves realize that is not very good.
Well, I, I think, and I've, again, I spoke with Andy, I think there's still an intent that, that next year that would be replaced, with the Rotary as a big participant in that, above and beyond these dollars.
I was hoping that they would take that.
Where's it going to go?
Uh, we've been talking about just west of the playground, and we'll have to figure that out for sure, but so...
There's a little bit of space.
So north of the scorer's table now, the score tower.
Move on us the balls don't hit anybody.
Yeah, and west of that, is where we were talking.
No, it wouldn't be a bad place, really.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table, any other discussion, because I think the time to give it a day. All in favor?
Yeah.
I think we, we've done the best we can.
Mayor, you need to call opposed, please. Call opposed, please.
Okay, opposed?
You have two.
Thank you. So, it's always a democratic process, it's unfortunate that it's so late in the time to do a different thing, but all what we can hope for is that the surplus of last year budget will allow us not to tax.
Move to go on recess.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you.